Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming this evening. I am Judy Heron, and I've had the pleasure to be the city clerk and the city election official for going on six months. This is the 2018 Candidate Information Session for the general municipal election to be held on November 6th. The purpose of this session is to cover the duties and time commitments of city council members. Each city department will provide an overview of their department and highlight the interaction between city council members and city staff, city initiatives, and work plan projects, department budgets, and city operations overall. At the end of the entire presentation, there'll be an opportunity for questions. And at this time, I would like to introduce our council candidates who are here today to come up, introduce yourselves, let us know what district you're in.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cecilia Taylor, and I'm running for District 1.
Hello, Betsy Nash, and I'm running for District 4.
Ron Shepard, and I'm running real hard for District 4 because there's some fierce competition.
I'm Mike Dunn, and I'm running for District 1.
Thank you all. Moving right along to Slide 2. This is the agenda for this evening. We'll be doing introductions, which we've done. They'll talk about the form of government, organization overview. We'll briefly review the fiscal year 2018-19 budget, and then we'll have the department overviews. So first, we'll speak about the form of government in the city of Menlo Park. We are governed by a city council manager form. The residents inform the city council of their needs. The city council then relays those to the city manager at a city council meeting, and the city manager then directs staff to achieve those goals. The city council is elected by district and selects the mayor and mayor pro tem or vice mayor annually at their December meeting. The city manager is appointed by the city council, and the city staff is hired by the city manager. Menlo Park is a general law city, which means we are bound by state general laws. State law describes the city's form of government, which we just covered, as a city council manager form. It also governs our municipal elections to make sure we're in accordance with California Elections Code. It outlines city council qualifications, things like citizenship, age, are you a registered voter, things like that. And it also tells us how term limits provisions, resolutions, voting requirements can be adopted. There's a whole laundry list of things that kind of differentiate between general law and charter cities, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of those here. I'm going to move on to the role of the city council manager form of government, which we will talk about the city council. The role of the city council is to set strategic direction, and this is achieved through a goal-setting meeting, which is done annually. They also review and approve budgets. As I mentioned before, the city council appoints the city manager, and they also appoint the city attorney, and the city council serves as the voice of the residents. The mayor is selected by the city council annually in December and handles all of the ceremonial functions, things like proclamations. The mayor also presides over the meetings and is the facilitator and spokesperson for the entire city council. Moving down to the city manager, he's considered the CEO, handles personnel management, and is charged with carrying out city council direction. The city manager oversees daily operations and prepares and presents the budget. Going to look at the advisory bodies which are appointed to by city council. City of Menlo Park has 11 Brown Act bodies. A Brown Act body guarantees the public's right to attend, participate in meetings of local legislative bodies. City council advisories include the Belle Haven Neighborhood Library Advisory Commission, Complete Streets Commission, Environmental Quality Control, Finance and Audit Committee, Heritage Street Task Force, Housing Commission, Library Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Sister Cities Commission, last but not least, Transportation, Master Plan Oversight and Outreach. So that means all of those committees and commissions have agendas that are posted within 72 hours. It's completely transparent, completely open to the public. So those are just 11 of the ones that Menlo Park has, and then 12 with our city council. All right, notes for this election. So, Menlo Park is participating in conducting our first district-based elections. There are five districts in total, with city council seat vacancies in districts 1, 2, and 4. I want to review with you all just communication standards with elections. Any communication between candidates and city staff will be directed through the city elections official, which is myself. That way, I make sure that all candidates are receiving all the same information at the same time. You'll see a lot of the emails that I send, I always preface with, "Hello, all. You're receiving this as a qualified candidate." That is to let you know that I am sending to everyone, and everyone, excuse me, is getting all of that same information. So if you guys reach out to other city staff, don't be surprised if they send it to me and I end up responding. Or you can just automatically send your inquiry or request to me, and I can handle that as well. Inside of the folder I did provide you is a Campaign Signs Code of Fair Practices. This is an optional form that you guys can sign and return to me, and it basically says that you pledge to not interfere with your fellow candidate's signs, that you'll obtain property owner permission before posting a sign, you will not impede pedestrian or vehicle traffic, and no posting in the right-of-way. I think this is the first time we've had one of these forms. I just thought it would be really helpful. We do it with, you know, fair practices for electioning. Figured why not have one for signs? And again, you can sign, return to me if you want. Brief note about the FPPC and reporting. FPPC is the Fair Political Practices Commission, and any candidate who submitted a 410, which is a statement of organization, the filing for the 460 will be on September 27th. I will be sending an email through NetFile, so you guys can file on NetFile, which is our online system. All of your FPPC forums will be done through NetFile. If you need a training, they provide one-on-one trainings over the phone, webinars, I can set you up with them to do that. If you have questions regarding specifics to the form, I'll have you contact the FPPC. You can reach out to me if you don't have that contact information, or you can just check out their website. September 27th is the filing date through July 31st, I believe, is the filing period. I'd have to check. Next on our journey is the City Council Procedures Manual. This is available on the website that I had created that has all the documents for this session. Website is actually listed at the bottom there. It's menlopark.org backslash info session documents. The City Council Procedure Manual basically provides a summary of important aspects of city council activities. It's comprised of acceptable practices, interaction with staff, support that is provided to the council, any financial matters, conflicts, liabilities, training, resource materials, all can be found in that document. Last I want to bring up is the Tentative Agenda or Rolling Agenda. This is an agenda that lists all of the meetings for the current calendar year. It is basically started when city council approves their upcoming meeting year in January or late December. This is updated by staff through the direction of the mayor. And at this time, I would like to take a breath, and I will turn it over to our fearless leader, our city manager, Alex McIntyre.
Thank you, Judy. Not bad for her first time. Thank you, Judy, really good job. So, we do mean to keep this as informal as possible. There's a lot of information we're sharing with you today, and we have a lot of people going to come up and talk to you, because if I talk to you for an hour and a half, you'd die. So we want to do this in an informal way, in a way that's going to be as helpful for each of you to understand who we are, what we do, how we operate, so that as you're out doing your good work on campaigns, you have sort of the basis of the knowledge of what you're campaigning for. So we're trying to give you this information in advance so that you guys can be better prepared. I am Alex McIntyre. For those of you who have not met me, I'm the city manager, and I've been here for six and a half years. So, simply, let's start with the fundamentals. You know, we're a city of about 35,000 residents. We have 4,700 businesses. We'll provide all these slides for you. If you don't want to take notes, we're happy to give them to you as well. I just see you guys writing feverishly. So, 19 square miles. The thing I always find most interesting about our square miles, we are, most of our city is underwater. We share a huge border with the city of Fremont. Think about it, because it's in the bay. We meet halfway in the bay. So when you go across the Dumbarton Bridge, you'll see a welcome to Menlo Park about midway through. That's our border. So, most of our land is actually underwater. Just housing statistics, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about, well over 14,000 total housing units current and under construction. Thirty-seven percent of them are multifamily complexes. Fifty-six percent of all of our housing is owner-occupied. Right now, we have a little over 1,700 units either in development or under construction as we speak. City services. One of the things I always find fascinating when people call the city of Menlo Park, they always ask about simple things like, "I'd like to talk to your fire department." And I use that as an example of a service we don't provide. It is not under the auspices of the city of Menlo Park, nor under the auspices of me. But so we're going to walk you through very quickly some of the services we do provide. Law enforcement, permitting, obviously, through the planning department or the community development department, street traffic signs, street signals, sidewalks, trees, parks, rights-of-way, libraries, recreation, childcare, senior center, pools, gymnastics centers. We provide water for about a third of the city's residents. The other two-thirds is provided by Cal Water. We run elections, and we have something called overlapping jurisdictions. And here are the things we don't do. We are not the fire district. They're a separate standalone district that takes care of public, fire issues with public safety. The West Bay Sanitary District provides the sewer and sanitary connections, so while we provide water, we do not have anything to do with it as it's leaving your house heading off to a point so far. California Water Service, as I mentioned earlier, is the water provider for about two-thirds of the city. And the schools are not a part of the city as well. And I say that, most people understand that and know that. What most people don't know is we have five school districts in Menlo Park. And the one that always catches people is the Redwood City School District is in Menlo Park over by, on Haven Road, the housing units out there. County of San Mateo provides a lot of what we call the Safety Net Services on behalf of our residents, and so that's an overlapping jurisdiction as well. San Mateo County also has, though, municipal services in the county pockets of Menlo Park. Menlo Oaks is a large county pocket, and West Menlo by the Alameda is another large county pocket in Menlo Park. With those services, all the municipal services I mentioned to you earlier are provided by the county, not by the city of Menlo Park. And finally, we have the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, which is a very important authority that's trying to work on preserving and enhancing the creek and its operations. The creek, as you know, back in the late '90s flooded and was devastating to both Palo Alto and Menlo Park, as well as East Palo Alto. So we have been working feverishly on trying to create a creek that's going to be more trustworthy when the big rains come one day. So, I want to give you a sort of an organizational overview. I think Judy laid this out. I want to go kind of a layer deeper. The city council obviously appoints all the advisory bodies, and those of you who've sat through council meetings have seen the council deliberate on who gets appointed to what various commissions and committees. The council appoints two very important people. The most important is the city attorney, and he's in the back of the room, it's the reason I'm saying that. The least important is me. And I'm joking a little bit, in the sense that Bill and I, Bill McClure, the city attorney, and I work really close together. I'm making sure the city operations run the way they need to. Bill keeps me out of legal messes, and I keep Bill out of operational messes, and it's a brilliant relationship. I, on the other hand, have direct reports to me and the assistant city manager, community development director, the police chief, the public works director, the administrative services director, the community services director, and the library services director. And all those people you're going to meet here presently, they're going to talk a little bit more about what they do and how they do their positions. My job really is to keep this operation running. It is an interesting job. It's a challenging job. It's a fulfilling job, and it can be a job that's also incredibly difficult. So it's one of those things that the council tasks me with, and I think I've been doing, hopefully, a good job for several years now. So my role really is chief executive officer, and that's really what Judy touched on. And my role is called out in both the city council manager plan, but it's also called out in our municipal code. And I execute city council-approved policies and direction. I meet with the mayor to set the city council meeting agendas, and that's something we do on a weekly basis. I obviously oversee the daily operations of the city. I'm in charge of personnel management, and that really is the hiring and retention of the qualified staff to come in and do the good work on behalf of the city. And finally, administer the city's council-adopted budget each year. I'm also the director of emergency services, and this is the title that's really handed to me more through the state than through the council. And this is basically in the aftermath of any kind of disaster, what my job, my job shifts dramatically. I work directly then with public, the first responders, whether it's police, fire, or public works, on the response to that disaster, whatever it might be. A lot of the authority flows to me as the director of emergency services while we're in a declared emergency, which the council declares in the aftermath of a disaster. Fortunately, I have not played that role in six and a half years, and I hope not to. Little bit about how we sort of develop the work plan for this, for the year. Many of you I know have had a chance to participate in this development process, and it's a cycle. And it starts really at the top there. We do goal-setting in January. What we do is we meet with the council. Staff brings to the council our present, kind of status of our present work, the work we're doing, and what I'll call the workload, the everyday processing of the things we do. For example, the patrol on the streets doesn't need council direction. We just do that every single day, 24/7. Issuing accounts payable, we don't need the council direction to do that. We do that every week or so. And those kinds of processes are called the workload. Then there's the work plan, and the work plan really are these initiatives that the council has through the community and through the staff to say, "We'd like to do these new kinds of things on behalf of the city of Menlo Park." This year, I believe, we have 57 items on the work plan, and they are behind me on these charts. And we cannot fit them on one screen. We can, but you can't read them. So what we wanted to do is really have them available here for you so that you can see them. I think in your packet, you have the memo that I'm taking to the council tomorrow night to talk about revising the work plan. I'm going to explain that to you later on. The goal-setting also, the process is also to develop the budget principles. This is all teeing up to how do we figure out how to spend the city's $117 million every year, not every year, but in this current year. Budget principles are generally modified each year, ever so slightly. Council has sort of something of interest they want to see revised through the budget principles process. New initiatives and priorities, as I've mentioned to you here, the plans and the ideas the council has. And a lot of this is, there's always brilliant ideas, and somebody in the past said, "We can do anything, we just can't do everything." And the problem with this has to do with priority setting and capacity. And you're going to, we're going to talk a lot more about capacity here when Nick Pegaros comes up later. The plan's adopted generally in January, February. We then move through the budget development process and present the budget to the council in June for consideration. Ideally, the budget reflects the budget principles. It reflects the workload that we talked about, reflects all the items on the work plan. And we tell the council, "This is what we need to be able to make this happen," whatever the "this" is in the current year. So the budget's developed, and then every year, we just cycle through this process, you know, year after year. The work plan generally is meant to be an 18-month work plan, even though our budget's a 12-month budget, because we set the work plan in January, start moving towards it for budget adoption in June, and then we really kick off the funding for it for the next 12 months. So it becomes a rolling 18-month process. I think I just covered all these. Oh, so the work plan, obviously, yeah, I talked about capacity. This year, really, one thing I wanted the council to focus on, because we struggle with setting priorities. When you have 57 items, all 57 can't be the most important item. So I work with the council to try to get them to tell us, what are those top five or six items that we really, come hell or high water, we're going to get done this year based upon whatever milestones we set. Council came up, I said five, they came up with six. They are my bosses. At the end, they get to determine how many we have. But they came up with six priority work plan items. These are the ones here directly behind me, and I apologize for blocking the sign. And these are the things that we will endeavor to get done, which means it may be at the cost of other work plan items. We may decide to shift staff towards these items, particularly in light of the fact that if the staffing we have for these items suddenly disappears on us, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So this whole process is also, we report out on a quarterly basis to the council. We give the council the update, and that's what tomorrow's report out is on, is the update. Yes?
Alex, since you do work with the mayor, each year, each year, the mayor changes.
Correct.
Is there any, is there a new consistency with these projects that you might go down the road with, what, with all these type of folks somewhere else?
Typically, when we start a project, the goal is to finish the project. In other words, and many projects will be longer than even the 18 months. I mean, those of you who remember Santa Cruz sidewalks, that was not a perfect 12-month start on July 1 and finish by June 30. It spans several years, and it spans several, I'll use the word administrations for lack of a better term. So it started under one mayor, continued under a second mayor, and was completed under a third mayor. That's not atypical at all in how we get our projects done. So what we try to do is, once the council sets a priority or sets an initiative, we endeavor to get it done. It doesn't matter who's in the leadership role.
Do you have that in the PPO?
Right. And I think what happens, the good news with the city of Menlo Park is we've had consistency on the council with regards to who's been on the council. So as the council changes, now certainly, you know, a new council majority can decide, perhaps, they don't want us to focus on these certain projects anymore, and we would then shelve them. Certainly. So I'm going to now hand this over to the assistant city manager, Nick Pegaros, and he's going to talk a little bit about our budgeting process and go through some of our capacity analysis.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening, everyone. My name's Nick Pegaros. I am the assistant city manager for the city of Menlo Park. Relatively new to my role, I was promoted from administrative services director at the beginning of August, and given my involvement in the preparation of the 2018 budget, I am providing the presentation this evening. However, in the future, our new administrative services, Lankadias, will be providing financial updates to the council. So just some quick facts. Candidates all received a copy of the budget. We're very proud of this document. It was, it represents a reflective collective effort of a number of individuals in the organization, as well as some of our committees. Our fiscal year begins July 1. It's, as a year, it incorporates both our operating and capital. Operations are basically everything that we do on a daily basis. Our capital budget is defined based on the dollar value of the project. Typically, these projects will span multiple years, multiple months or years, as mentioned by the city manager. Our budget incorporates budgets for 48 funds, so the one budget document could, in some regards, be viewed as a budget for 48 different sort of funds, subsidiaries, companies, however you want to characterize it. On an annual basis, we issue just over 11,000 payroll checks, which represents about 43, 433 paychecks per pay period. This is important as we look at our personnel resources. You'll see a number that I will often refer to as full-time equivalent personnel that's lower than this, and this is due to our reliance on temporary staff to deliver services to the community. In addition, we order, or we issue about 4,100 vendor payments to a variety of, for a variety of purposes, including contract services that we use to both construct and deliver certain services. The 2018-19 budget has a total of 75 capital improvement projects, and I do want to highlight that our documents are award-winning. We have our capital budget here, and candidates have also been provided a link to our comprehensive annual financial report, which is our annual audit, and measures both the city's position as of June 30, which is the end of our fiscal year, as well as provides some context of our budget to actuals over time. So at the highest level, across all of our funds, our total resources for the 2018-19 fiscal year total about $148, $149 million. The reason we use resources as opposed to revenue is that resources is encompassing of a variety of items, revenue being the single largest item. However, it also includes use of assigned fund balance and a couple of other technical finance things that I'm happy to explain to anyone offline. Requirements, so in order to deliver the services both listed behind me, as well as maintain the level of service to the community that has historically been provided, we have requirements of $147 million. I think it's critical to point out that the resources exceed the requirements, meaning that we have a balanced budget. Incorporated in the requirements is not just expenditures, but also transfers, et cetera. But the single largest component of our budget is personnel. And as you'll see there, we have 287 and a quarter full-time equivalent personnel. Full-time equivalent personnel is a way of ensuring that we're accounting properly for all of our part-time, full-time and part-time personnel. A half-time personnel may be someone who works only 1,040 hours per year would be considered .5 of an FTE. So here, you see a quarter of an FTE is a combination of all of our, of all temporary employees. The general fund budget, specifically, our single largest budget, which provides the vast majority of services to the community, is a $67 million requirement. And then our special funds, a number of those other funds that I had mentioned earlier, total $26 million. Incorporated in our budget, as I mentioned earlier, we provide both the operating and the capital. And for next year, we have our capital improvement program, which is inclusive of two very distinct pieces. The first is new money that the city council provides for new projects, and then the second are carryover appropriations, and these are funds that the council has appropriated in prior periods for projects that span, that sort of lapse the fiscal year and continue on. And so this is our, this is how we get to our total requirements. In addition, our budget outlines our five-year capital improvement plan, and one thing that I would like to highlight is that there, in addition to what you see there as our current year, as well as our carryover appropriations for CIP, there's an additional $131 million of identified project funding need that will provide for 70 additional projects over the course of the next five years. Just at a very high level, again, I'm happy to answer any questions offline on the specifics of our finances, but with respect to our general fund, the single largest revenue source is property taxes. This has a very significant impact on the city's ability to maintain services, even during tough times. Property taxes in Menlo Park are historically incredibly stable and have grown very well over the last several years. The other element that I'd like to point out here is the significant slice of the pie that is attributed to transient occupancy tax. These are the taxes paid by individuals who stay in hotels in Menlo Park. The 2018-19 budget incorporates the addition of two new hotels, Hotel Nia in the Gateway Development, as well as the Park James here on El Camino. And then finally, of particular note, you'll hear this when the departments present their budgets. Charges for services, which are cost recovery for services ranging from community development permits, projects, as well as our recreation fees, is a integral component of our financing ability and ability to provide services to the community. Effectively, we provide a very specialized service, and it's our goal to recover 100% of the cost to provide those services. On the expenditure side, our general fund expenditures total $67 million. Single largest component, as you can see, is personnel. This includes both salary and wages, as well as benefits, health insurance, pension costs, et cetera. To drill down just a little more on where those personnel expenditures are housed, you'll note that police and public works account for well over half of our personnel expenditures, and the other components there, community services is our, is our Parks and Recreation All of this, while the, while the general, while the budget really focuses on one year, clearly, the council in Menlo Park and the community in Menlo Park have taken a very proactive measure of ensuring that we're not just looking at the current 12 months or the 12 months, the 12 months upcoming, but we're also looking at the long-term trend. This year, in work in coordination with the Finance and Audit Committee, as well as our folks in our finance staff, we developed a 10-year forecast, and I would say, what I would like to highlight here, this is discussed more thoroughly in the budget document, but what I would like to highlight here is that, taking into account all known new revenue, as well as all known expenditures, including pension costs that are projected to double over, over the next several years, the city's financial situation is very strong, and we anticipate having a operating surplus for each of the years. You'll see that the operating surplus, which is the line there in this graph, sort of has a little trough, and then it returns, and that's due to a accounting or an anticipation of some type of economic slowdown that may affect some of our core revenues. In addition to our 10-year forecast, the city has rather conservative and appropriate In addition to our 10-year forecast, the city has rather conservative and appropriate general fund reserve policies. In total, we have reserves projected as of June 30 of 2018, equal to about $36.5 million. That's about 60% of our operating budget. So, you know, we could, with our reserves, we're able to stand the loss of a significant revenue generator. We would have sufficient time to, the reserves could be used to help sort of bridge the gap between when we lose those revenues and adjust so that we can sort of right-size in the new reality. Our general fund reserves are composed primarily of three different components. The first is economic stabilization. We also have economic, or emergency contingency, and then finally, our strategic pension reserve. In addition, we have assigned fund balances, and these are all set at city council policy direction and can be adjusted by the city council should they be, should it be necessary. Provided just a little bit of detail there. And then finally, we're anticipating the unassigned, so these are funds that have no planned use at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, 2018, of about $5 million. Very, very strong enviable position. As we look at the prior slide and you see the surpluses, those surpluses add to the unassigned.
How much of the reserves are necessary to, basically for cash flow purposes, because the city's largest revenues come in December and April, given that property taxes is our largest revenue? Well, property taxes on an annual basis are, if we split the payments evenly, it's about $12 million. The, those come in December, we get the December distribution, we get the April distribution, there's some timing fluctuations there. Given the fungibility of the city's resources, there is no immediate cash flow need as a result of the, as a result of timing for property taxes. So oftentimes, when I talk to the city manager, and we're talking about resources, I can, given all the slides I've showed you, I've presented to you, as well as to him on a regular basis, that the city's finances are strong, and the ability to do things may not necessarily be constrained by our ability to pay for them, but our ability to actually do the work. And so, as you'll see in the staff report that is going to council tomorrow evening, we have several slides in there that talk about staff resources. And as a service organization, our ability to provide the services and provide the projects and initiatives that are listed on the boards behind me is heavily dependent on having the staff available and capable, capable staff available to perform the projects. This slide here details our current staffing vacancy rate. You'll see Public Works, which is responsible for over two-thirds of the projects on the capital work plan, has a current vacancy rate of about 20%. Overall, citywide, we have a 15% vacancy rate. Additionally, provided in the staff report is a brief discussion of some of the challenges that we're experiencing filling these vacancies, and here are a couple of examples of the timing required to fill vacancies. Public service, as well as all, I think, employers in this area are faced with immense challenges finding and retaining and retaining capable staff to perform the work that needs to be performed. And you'll see here, based on the day count, the impact that we are experiencing in some very important positions. So the reason I bring this up is that we face sort of a deficit that's not necessarily a financial deficit, but more a deficit related to the loss of productivity resulting from vacancies. So to help illustrate this, we're provided a, I'll walk through a couple of slides here. The first is, you'll see a line, this is our, these are the budgeted hours that we, that are included in the adopted budget, necessary to provide all the services, both baseline or workload, as well as work plan initiatives. As we move through the year, we have actual experience. We actually expend a good portion of the personnel budget in, with, through employees providing those services. But what we notice is that, over time, we see this little bit, the shade, this lighter blue segment that I just highlighted there, these are hours that were planned to be productive, but could not be productive simply because we didn't have the folks in place to do it. What we see is that, over time, the, what you see is the triangle there, the blue section, this is the cumulative effect. These are the cumulative number of hours that we, that we were losing as a result of the vacancy rate, which you see in the black line shown there. Now, if you, if you remember from a slide I presented earlier, this was presented to the council in the work plan session back in January, you'll note that at the end, on the far right-hand side there, it's showing a vacancy rate of 14%. If you remember the previous slide, we're currently at 15%. And so, while this was sort of the anticipated vacancy rate, or this was the vacancy rate that we'd experienced in prior years, we're actually experiencing a higher rate this year. So this deficit, this loss of productivity, is what I would refer to as perhaps the more significant constraint on resources influencing the city's ability to get work done. So with that, I will hand it over to Public Works Director Justin Murphy for the beginning of the department overviews.
Going back to the 10-year plan?
Mm-hmm.
Why is the 2018-19 adopted surplus so much lower?
We increased the transfer to capital. And historically, the city has transferred approximately $3 million to capital. We took that up considerably in the 2018-19 budget to provide for a higher-than-usual level of capital improvement activity.
Thank you, Nick. So I am Justin Murphy. I'm the city's Public Works Director. I've been with the city since 1996, and I've been in the role of Public Works Director for almost three years. So Public Works were generally organized in a few different groups of engineering, transportation, and maintenance. So engineering and transportation is located here at City Hall, that's about half the department. And so we've got civil engineers, transportation engineers, technicians, inspectors, administrative staff, all working to, focused on the city's infrastructure. So in City Hall, we're focused on designing, planning, and constructing the city's infrastructure. And then the maintenance, which is mainly at the courtyard, is focused on maintaining that infrastructure. And maintenance is comprised of streets, trees, parks, facilities, and fleet. And there's a series of maintenance workers, water system operators, city arborists, and supervisors for those responsibilities. So in terms of some of the seasonal work that you may be seeing out in the field right now, we're cleaning storm drain lines, we're preparing for the next round of street sweeping, where that increases in the fall, we're planting trees, and then we're responding to requests that come in through the city's portal called ACT Menlo Parks. That's Alert, Connect, Track Menlo Park. It's powered by C Click Fix, and that's how we try to channel a lot of the requests that come into the city, and our maintenance staff is taking care of that. So from a budget overview perspective, as Nick said, we do have the largest budget in the city. There's a good chunk of that that's from the capital side, but the, and the straight general fund operating, that's about $11.89 million. The capital improvement's $38 million. And then there's the water fund. So the city does provide water on each end of the city, so up in Sharon Heights and then by the bay, and that's a $23 million enterprise. So that includes both operating capital. That's an enterprise fund paid for by the ratepayers. We have a total of 69 full-time equivalents, and that personnel cost is $11 million. Right now, as was mentioned, we've got 13 vacancies, and it's not just the number of vacancies, the majority of those vacancies are in City Hall. It's not just the quantity of vacancies, it's that we've recently lost a couple key people, which also have a lot of loss of institutional knowledge that just went out the door. So, right now, we're focused, we've got a lot of great people that are still here, and we're focused on what's currently in the workload, but it's very difficult for us to take on new initiatives, and there's some things that we will need to kind of slow down a little bit. Also, just want to emphasize that we have a number of contracts. So this is just one sampling of maintenance contracts. We have, so it's over $3 million of maintenance contracts, this is with 20 different companies. That's just on the, on the maintenance side. We also have a number of contractors that review plans, perform inspections, construct projects, so there's a large amount of contract services associated with the department. In terms of initiatives, we've got the adoption of the transportation master plan, so that's one of the top six priority items. And we also have some boards from that initiative on the backside here, which you could take a look at, closer look at after today's presentation. And so that's been a real focus, and will continue to be a focus of the department. We also have, in the top six, create a citywide safe house at school programs. This is a program, not necessarily the infrastructure, that would come at a later stage, but we've kicked that off, and that continues to be a top-six item for us. And there's the, completing the Bell Haven traffic studies. We've got a couple boards to my, to my right here that will be on display for the next few weeks in the Bell Haven neighborhood. We've already had a meeting in front of the Complete Streets Commission. The display and advertising of these boards are kind of the next step in the process, but we're looking to wrap up that study in this fiscal year. We're in the process of installing a long-desired restroom for the ballfields at Jack Lyle Park. We're going to be replacing some playground equipment at Nealon Park. It's the first of a few parks that have been identified where there's a need to upgrade the playground equipment to meet current standards. And then we've, we've started construction of an emergency well at our corporation yard. The below-ground work is done. Early in 2019, we'll be doing the above-ground work. The image that's on this slide is the Chrysler pump station. So this is a stormwater pump station located near the bay, next to the Menlo Gateway Development. And so we're pursuing the replacement of that with a design that is in partnership with the Bohannon Development Company. But this is an example of a project where the costs have escalated beyond anyone's imagination, and so we're working for creative ways to try to fund, fund that gap. The council appropriated $6 million, but our current price tag's $10 million.
What were the extra costs?
It's just the increased cost of construction. And let's see. So then there's, as Alex mentioned previously, there's the work plan items, but there's also a basic workload. So one of the key, key functions of the department is maintaining and improving the city streets. So, and we do that in multiple ways. We've got our city crews, they're repairing potholes and doing minor street repairs, such as this one. So this is a crew of three repairing some paving at the corner of Oakland and Bay. We have, we've got a contractor onboard to do some major street repairs, so we recently repaired some streets, Laurel, Ravenswood. We also have a million-dollar contract out right now to, as preventative maintenance for streets, so that's putting a slurry seal on the streets. So there's a number of streets being maintained this fall, which includes like Ivy Drive as one example. And then we have a large repaving project, which is scheduled for next summer, where we'd be spending $3 million. And to actually be able to execute that project next summer, we're in the thick of preparing for that to be able to hit the proper bid cycles. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to field questions later, but I'll turn it over to our Chief of Police, Dave Bertini.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dave Bertini. I'm your Chief of Police. I've been with the City of Menlo Park since 2011, and have been the chief ever since January of this year. I'm honored to have gotten that position in January. I'm here to give you a little bit of an overview about the Police Department and our operations. We are divided into four programs, as you see on the screen. Patrol, Investigations, Communications, and Administration. Patrol's the most visible part of our department and has the most contact with the community. And the Patrol Division includes the uniform officers you see, traffic, parking, code enforcement, and community service officers. Investigations includes plainclothes detectives. We have a General Crimes and a Special Investigations Unit in our Detective Division. These units handle complex and difficult major cases, investigations, and they support the Patrol Division and have specialized training to do that. Our communications are our 911 dispatchers. The Menlo Park Police Department operates a 24-hour, what's called a PSAP, that's a Public Safety Answering Point. Communication officers are also dispatchers for police and fire and medical units here at the city, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The Administration Division consists of the command staff, that's myself and two commanders, the Records Division, the training and hiring, and emergency preparedness, and also includes administrative staff for the city. So a little bit about the Police Department budget. We have approximately a $20 million budget, which, absent the capital improvement plan, is actually the largest in the city. About 80% of our budget is for personnel costs. As we are a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, it stands to reason that a larger percentage of the overall budget would go to personnel. For that same reason, we're the largest department in the city with 77.5 FTEs, full-time equivalent positions. 54 of those positions are sworn officers, which are the men and women that you see in uniform that wear a badge and carry a firearm. Those are considered sworn officers. 23 and a half of these positions are non-sworn professional staff. These include dispatchers, records specialists, along with parking, community service, and code enforcement officers. In this recent budget cycle, we were able to increase our FTE count by one and a half by obtaining authorization to hire a second code enforcement officer to assist with the large workload and backlog of code enforcement violations and complaints. We're also authorized to convert a half-time dispatcher to a full-time dispatcher, which will assist in the increased workload due to the new text-to-911 system and capability that's coming on live very soon. Kind of hard to see on the big screen, but this is basically the City of Menlo Park and what our police beats are in Menlo Park. Traditionally, the Police Department has divided the city into three beats. Beat one includes all of the city that is west of the Caltrain tracks. Beat two includes all of the area from the Caltrain tracks east to Highway 101, and beat three was the area east of Highway 101. Last year, a development agreement allowed the Police Department to hire several more officers and create a new beat four, which is the pink section on the right side of the screen, which is active only during weekdays and normal business hours. This allows officers assigned to beat three to remain in the Bell Haven neighborhood and provide services without being pulled to the new developments and businesses along the Bayfront Corridor. And some of our initiatives for this year, coming year, is to complete the staffing of the beat four program. As you saw, the vacancy rate, we have a lot of vacancies also. We currently have seven officers in the field training program, and we have four officers in the police academy. So last year, we actually hired 15 people in one year, which is a huge undertaking for us. So I hope to complete the staffing of the beat four program during this year. Text-to-911 calls will be going live very, very soon, and I'll tell you a secret, it's probably out, if you, if you text to 911 now, it works. We actually will answer you. So it is out there. We're in the process of going out with a public, a public service announcement about that. We also are going to be, hopefully, completing the police commander's recruitment that was vacated when I was promoted from commander to police chief in January. from Commander to Police Chief in January. And we're going to continue our efforts to lower violent crime and property crimes throughout the city. We have seen and realized the lowest violent crime rates in a decade here at the Menlo Park Police Department. We're very proud of that. We continue to have Town Hall meetings for anybody who has specific issues dealing with the Police Department. We'll come out and speak to any group of any size. And we really do want to staff a fully-loaded traffic unit with at least four police motorcycle units and implement a data-driven strategic data, or, excuse me, traffic enforcement plan. As of this date, we have zero motorcycle officers because of retirements, and we're in the process of training people to take those positions. As we all know, traffic is a huge issue here in Menlo Park, and we are hoping that we can get this traffic unit up and running very, very soon. And with that, I'll, yes, sir?
How many officers do you think you might lose in the next five years because of retirements?
The question was, how many officers do we think we may lose in the next five years? We actually did a study on that. I don't have the exact number, but from my memory, it's somewhere upwards of ten to a dozen.
And if they didn't have to retire, did they stay on?
I don't know the answer to that. I turned fifteen in December, but I'm still here. What was the trick keeping me? Yeah. Promoting the chief probably kept me here. Yes. All right. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Derek Schwiger, the Director of Community Services.
Good evening. I'm Derek Schwiger, Community Services Director here with Menlo Park. So I've been here in Menlo Park for nearly, just after, just about six years. With that, I've been in my current position for about ten months. So the Community Services aim is to improve and maintain the quality of life for its Menlo Park residents. And we do, part of our Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Association Society is that we really do believe that parks make life better. So that's what we're here for. So just as an overall, just want to, well, I'm going to, forgot that I am responsible for this. So here we go. I'm just going to provide just an overview of our Community Services Department's services. So Community Services is responsible for a broad range of recreation, educational, and cultural programs for both children, adults, and seniors. Our facilities encompass nearly two-hundred-and-twenty acres of parkland, distributed among thirteen parks, two community centers, three childcare centers, two public pools, two gymnasiums, one gymnastics center, and a senior center. So also included, some of the things that don't necessarily get a lot of attention, but they're also very important, including in the recreation, Parks and Recreation areas, are our sports fields. We do maintain the tennis courts. We do have two dog parks here in the city, picnic areas, playgrounds, a skate park, and we do have a shared use of a performing arts center here in Menlo Park. As you know, it's the Menlo Pack. So, Menlo Atherton Pack. So the department also offers a variety of community classes, and we do conduct twenty-five community special events, twenty-five community special events per year. And then, all of these efforts are supported by the Parks and Rec Commission, of which staff is responsible for staffing, being the liaison, and so forth. Okay? Just a couple of highlights on a couple of the other items that are there. So Aquatics, as you may or may not be aware that we do have a private contractor who operates our two pools at both Burgess and Bellhaven Pools. We do have, in the three childcare centers, you have MCC, Menlo Children's Center that's here on this campus, the Bellhaven Child Development Center, which is a grant-funded, state-grant-funded program, as well as the Bellhaven After-School Program. We do have, our most recent constructive facility was the state-of-the-art gymnastics center that you see over here. It is actually the largest recreation program that we do offer in the city, and it's well-attended with both preschool, developmental gymnastics program, as well as a, two boys' and girls' competitive teams. The other thing that I would point out is with the Menlo Atherton Pack, we have allotted, as part of our agreement with the school district, fifty-two days of programming. And I am proud to say that over the last couple of years, we've been able to fulfill all of those fifty-two days in terms of having program for the community. So having that asset available to the community, we've been able to maintain and program it. And frankly, it's quite a challenge to do that. So really proud of our staff for being able to do that. So just a quick overview of the budget. Community Services is approximately nine-point-eight-million-dollar budget. It's all general fund. We have fifty-two and a quarter FTEs that do provide, allows us to do a few things. One of those things include twenty thousand recreation programs that are offered, over twenty-two thousand annual program participants. We also like to track participant hours because as a weight of measurement. So nearly one-point-four participant hours that serve, and also serve seventeen thousand people in various community special events. We are proud to say that we have an average over the last few years of approximately eighty percent cost recovery, which, direct cost recovery. So that means less impact to the general fund. And so, I'll move on to the next slide here. So just some initiatives that are ongoing. Currently, right now, we're right in the process of working on, or, excuse me, underway is the Parks and Rec Facilities Master Plan. So we began that just over about a half a year ago, and we expect to have that completed sometime this fiscal year, somewhere in January, February. Also, we continue to implement the Department's strategic plan that we began a couple of years ago. We're going to implement the City Council's decisions on the updated cost allocation plan. Going to the next slide. We continue to maintain the council-approved cost-recovery levels for all programs, improve opportunities for volunteerism at community events, explore emerging trends and opportunities around sports, and complete the after-school programs analysis. So that is in a nutshell, and I would like now to introduce our Assistant Library Services Director. That's Nick Shegda, and I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. I'm Nick Shegda, the Assistant Director of Library Services. I'm pinch-hitting for Susan Homer, our library director who's on vacation. I've been with the City of Menlo Park since 1992, and I've been Assistant Director of the library for about two years. The library is an active and popular learning center. We have two facilities, the main library here in Burgess Campus, and a smaller branch library, which we share with the Bellhaven School. We are a resource for all of the citizens of Menlo Park. The library supports two city-affiliated groups, the Library Commission, which meets Monday on the third, monthly on the third Monday of the month, and the Bellhaven Neighborhood Library Advisory Committee, which meets as needed during the library needs assessment process. So our mission is to be the center for lifelong learning in the community. That learning is shifting from the traditional model of a knowledge warehouse to a more active and experiential learning model, from early literacy through to STEM and STEAM programs for grade schoolers. This is a couple of photos from last year's Science Night. Our popular Science Night program is twice a year, and we're having another one on September 24th, through to programs for middle schoolers and teens, and lectures and classes where adults can meet, connect, and learn. So our staff and our budgets support three-hundred-and-forty-thousand visitors last year who borrowed, downloaded, or streamed half a million items, eighteen thousand attendees at one of the many programs that we hold throughout the year. Those programs are an increasing part of our work. We're reaching out into the community in a lot of ways. Everything from baby songs and preschool storytimes that set the foundations for reading and school success to the kind of programs that help adults navigate a changing technological landscape, gain new skills for the workplace, or do research that's necessary to thrive as an entrepreneur. So again, we're a lifelong learning organization, not just reading literacy, reading is still very important, but change literacy, helping people discover tools to adapt to a rapidly-changing world. Whoops, I went too far. Here we go. So our initiatives for the year include continued work on the Library System Improvements Project, deepening and expanding our already-strong connections to the Menlo Park community, and investing in our adult literacy program, more lifelong learning, and in developing our talented staff. I'll be happy to answer questions at the end. Now, I'd like to introduce Deanna Chow, who is the Assistant Director of Community Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Deanna Chow, the Assistant Community Development Director for Planning. I'm here for Mark Menzer, who is the Community Development Director, who unfortunately had a prior engagement. So I am fairly new to my role, about two months, but I have been here with the city for about fourteen years, and I'm excited to continue my role with the community. So I'm here to present Community Development. So we have three primary divisions. So the first is the Planning Division, which contains current planning and long-range planning. So probably most are familiar with current planning, which is what we see for building on private property. So how does it conform with our zoning regulations? So we receive questions, everything from, "How tall can my fence be?" to processing development applications of a million-square feet over at the Facebook West Campus Expansion Project. Long-range planning, or often sometimes called advanced planning, is really focusing on the creation of goals and policies for land use planning here in the city. Examples include our adoption of the El Camino Downtown Specific Plan in 2012, which highlighted development standards and development regulations for the El Camino in downtown. And then, more recently, in 2016, the city adopted Connect Menlo, our general plan update, which guides future development here in the city. The next service we have is the Building Division, which focuses on permitting and inspection. So following our development review, we would receive a building permit and receive inspections, and that's primarily to maintain the life, safety, and welfare of our city and to coordinate with consistency with local and federal regulations. Our last division, or it's the Office of Housing and Economic Development. And this was a recent addition to the Community Development Department, transferring from the City Manager's Office this fiscal year. And it really was an opportunity to bridge the two divisions together because of the synergies and the interrelationships between land use, housing, and economic development. So also, our department supports two commissions. We support the Planning Commission, who is the reviewing agency for development applications. They are oftentimes a recommending body to the City Council on large development applications as well. The Planning Commission meets generally two times a month here in the City Council Chambers on Mondays at 7:00 PM. And then, the second commission is our Housing Commission, which is an advisory body to the City Council on housing policy and makes recommendations on our below-market-rate housing agreements. And the Housing Commission generally meets once a month over in the Ariaga Recreation Center on Wednesdays at 6:30. In terms of our operating budget, we're about nine million dollars, most of which is for personnel costs. Approximately sixty percent of our operating budget is to support our personnel. And the next largest, about approximately two million dollars, is to support contract services. So in addition to permanent, full-time staff, we have a number of contract services, contract planners, contract plan-checking, contract inspectors. Also, we have Hello Housing, who does our administration for our below-market-rate housing program. Our positions are wide and varied depending upon which division you're in. So you could be our permit planning tech, who is assisting folks at the front counter, to planners who are reviewing development applications, inspectors who are out in the field for most of the day doing the inspections, to our management analysts who are part of our Housing and Economic Development team. And just to give you a sense of our workload, in the past year, we had approximately a hundred development applications that we reviewed. We did about, we issued fourteen hundred building permits, and we conducted approximately eleven thousand inspections in one year. So the two thousand, our initiatives this year. So we are, I will click these three because we have three of the six top work-plan items from the City Council this year. So the first is the El Camino Downtown Specific Plan Review. This is looking at our development caps, looking at what regulations could potentially change in this downtown specific plan area. We are currently reaching out to some of our partner agencies, our school districts, our fire districts, to see what comments they might have, and then bringing forward a package for the Planning Commission and the City Council to consider with a scope of services on how to embark on what changes could be brought forward. In addition, Connect Menlo, as I mentioned, was adopted in 2016, and we're looking to do a two-year annual review later this year, early 2019. We will also be looking at what possible changes might be needed, and also looking at how we might be able to address the development cap as well. The second item is the downtown mixed-use parking structure. So earlier this summer, there was a study session on the proposed uses of a downtown parking structure. City Council members, our subcommittee of Mueller and Carlton are working with staff to determine what are some of the best options, two different options for parking plazas, one and three. And then, finally, the Guild Theater, which was approved by the City Council earlier this spring for a new entertainment venue. So staff is continuing to work on a number of development review projects, large mixed-use, commercial residential projects, both primarily in the Bayfront area as well as the downtown specific plan area. Many of these projects are displayed behind me on these boards, and I believe the link has been also forwarded to you as well on the webpage. The next, this was actually an outcome of the Connect Menlo General Plan Update, where we adopted sustainable and building regulations. One of them was the adoption of new EV charging regulations. The City Council directed staff to further evaluate the possibility of expanding those citywide to have one comprehensive requirement, and that just went forward to the Council in August, and was supported, and will be bringing back for a second reading in October. So implementing housing policies and programs. So here, the Council, in the summer, also adopted an anti-discrimination policy. This is just an example of one of the housing element programs that was implemented. just an example of one of the housing element programs that was implemented. It was a source of income anti-discrimination. The City Council's also adopted several updates to the Below Market Rate Housing Guidelines for consistency with state law, for example, inclusionary zoning, and then also for just clarity in consistency in application. And we're currently working on a tenant relocation assistance program, which we'll be having some community meetings this week. One thing that, as a player, I'm excited about is electronic plan review. So this is not only to help staff, but also the public have the ability to have better able to receive information regarding their plans and the permit process to more efficiently have a product that has a better interface. And then finally, as I think you've heard, there's been a number of staffing challenges. Community development also is in that same situation currently. And so one of the other initiatives that we hope to embark on but not have been able to is the review of single-family residential design requirements. So with that, I will forward it to Lanka Diaz, who is our Administrative Services Director. Thank you.
Lanka Diaz, the Administrative Services Director. Been in my role just over one month. I've been with the city about three years, was the Human Resources Manager prior to So in Administrative Services, we have three divisions: Finance, Human Resources, and Information Technology. Finance is responsible for the city's accounting, budgeting, financial reporting, revenue. It also houses our risk management program for the city, as well as payroll, purchasing, and accounts payable. In Human Resources, we're responsible for recruiting, onboarding, and training employees. HR leads our employee engagement efforts and labor relations. It also oversees our safety, workers' compensation, and other benefits. In Information Technology, is responsible for providing a reliable and secure network for the entire organization, includes our networking hardware, server systems, data storage, telecommunication systems. IT also manages the city's desktop, AV, and network systems while providing ongoing support to all end users. For our department budget overview, with our $6 million budget and our 22 full-time equivalent employees, I'll provide you just a sample of a few of the activities we accomplish. This year, Finance expects to renew over 4,700 business licenses. In addition to that, we typically process another 700 to 800 new business licenses. HR will manage over 400 employee and retiree files and offer over 100 employee training and development opportunities.
Do you also negotiate union contracts?
We do.
You don't use an outside person to do that? You do that yourself?
No, we do it with, a labor attorney is typically involved with that as well, as well as staff. And then throughout the year, IT will support about 400 workstations, about 500 email accounts, and then we have over 150 server and desktop applications as well. So this fiscal year, our initiatives are to continue with major system upgrades for greater department efficiency, better security citywide, as well as public convenience. One of the largest projects is in collaboration with Community Development, and it's to replace our city's land management system. HR staff will take on a number of initiatives aimed at attracting and keeping highly qualified employees. And one major effort will be to continue implementing the Employee Engagement Plan, resulting from a comprehensive organization-wide effort. Lucky for us, we recently filled our vacancies in Finance. However, we have two positions in HR we are recruiting for, and we'll have one vacancy in IT, which we hope to fill mid-year. And once we are fully staffed and trained, we hope to make progress on updating policies in each division, as well as documenting procedures in Human Resources and Finance. So that concludes the overview of the Administrative Services Department. Bill McClure will now come and discuss the City Attorney's Office.
So I'm Bill McClure. I'm the City Attorney for Menlo Park and have been officially the City Attorney since 1993. I'm coming up on 25 years this month. I was acting City Attorney off and on between 1985 and 1993, about half of the time, and I've been doing work for Menlo Park since 1978. Our firm has represented the city since 1960. So the services provided by the City Attorney's Office is, I serve as the city's chief legal officer. Duties are outlined both in state law, in the government code, as well as the municipal code. I serve at the will of the City Council. I can be fired at any point in time. Sometimes I wish they would. Some days are better than others. But I serve as the chief legal officer, and I oversee outside counsel. That includes some of the labor issues, litigation matters. Sometimes we hire other special outside counsel. We're involved with the labor negotiations. We have outside counsel that actually handles that. I did it a couple of years, many years ago, and was very happy not to do it anymore. Provide advice and legal representation to the City Council, the City Manager, staff boards, and commissions as needed. Basically, there are, and then we include contracts and property transactions. And within the City Attorney's Office, I have, there are six attorneys in our firm that actually spend part-time for the city. I'm actually a part-time employee of the city, and then I am on contract for hours over a certain amount each month. So we basically account for all of the time that we spend. There's myself, Cara Silver, who joined us a year ago, who was the Senior Assistant City Attorney in Palo Alto, took early retirement in Palo Alto, took about six months off. And when Lee Prince, who was a partner at the firm, decided for personal family reasons to move to North Carolina, we talked Cara into joining us and kind of filling that role. Lee is actually still working and doing a lot of work for the city of Menlo Park, particularly in the land use areas. So large development projects, we require review of EIRs, et cetera. Nick Flagel represents the city in some of the litigation involving the city. We get sued, or claims are filed for trip-and-fall matters, police excessive use of force, car accidents, when somebody may back into or run into somebody else. We have claims dealing with trees that fall over, branches that fall on cars, people that trip over cracks in sidewalks. So we kind of oversee the claims with the Finance Department, and then if there's litigation, we represent the city, and occasionally hire outside counsel to do that as well. Excuse me. The department, the budget overview, the annual budget, in the current fiscal year is $838,000, of which $657,000 of that is general fund, and $181,000 is personnel. And that is not all our firm that is representing. A very large chunk of that, of the personnel costs, is for labor negotiations and then representing the city in employee matters, some as disciplinary, some as contract separation agreements and things of that nature. Probably the largest chunk of the general fund, in fact, involves services that we provide, including working with Planning, Community Development, on reviewing all development permit applications, working with Public Works and all the different departments. So the initiatives for 27-2018, provide legal support in transition to district elections. We've spent a fair amount of time working on that. Drafting ordinances to implement below-market-rate requirements. Provide legal support for the general plan and all City Council work plan items. Provide assistance in council on election matters. Assist in interpreting the code to efficiently process development projects, and assisting in negotiation of the Facebook Development Agreement. And that about sums it up, and I think Clay is up next.
All right. Hello, I'm Clay Curtin. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. I've been with the city for about five years. And if you know me, I've had about five different titles during that time. Currently working as interim Housing and Economic Development Manager. The City Manager's Office includes three divisions: City Administration, City Clerk, and Sustainability. I'll tell you a little bit about those, but I also wanted to point out, we have our City Clerk, Judy Heron, here, who you all know. We have Rebecca Lucky, our Sustainability Manager. And of course, you've already heard from our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Alex Nick. Real quick, about City Administration, this department supports four Brown Act bodies currently. This includes the City Council, the Sister City Committee, the Environmental Quality Commission, and currently the Heritage Tree Task Force. Our Administration Division, besides providing City Council support, also oversees all citywide initiatives and policies. We handle intergovernmental relations, working with other agencies and entities at the higher level. We support the Sister City Program and its functions, as well as special projects that arise throughout the year. And the City Council Work Plan, which you see behind me on all these boards. The City Clerk, sorry, the City Clerk is the chief election official. She's also the chief liaison for all the commissions and committees, working with the individual staff liaisons from the departments. She oversees all of the agenda and meeting management, making sure that we are in compliance with the Brown Act, and handling all of our records management, and taking in public records requests, and being kind of the clearinghouse for those. The Sustainability Group, they manage our recycling and waste collection franchise agreement with Recology. They promote sustainable living through zero-waste, clean energy, and conservation efforts. And they also work to influence citywide policies, including those related to heritage trees, electric vehicle charging, and sustainable development and transportation policies. Our department budget is 3.4 million, which includes 2.7 million of general fund dollars. We have 10 full-time equivalent employees, and the personnel costs represent $1.9 million of our budget. Some of our initiatives for the current budget year include, again, addressing and working with the council to manage the City Council's work plan. That work plan is developed in January through a special City Council meeting, and then addressed throughout the year. The City Clerk has, one of her tasks is to make sure that these elections occur as they need to this year with the new district system. She's also planning to implement an electronic agenda management system to increase efficiency. Currently, that's a very manual process and takes up a lot of staff time. The Sustainability Division is working on a update to the Heritage Tree ordinance to both streamline and kind of improve the efficiency of that process, as well as implement the zero-waste and climate action plans that have been adopted by the City Council and have impacts to both residents and businesses. That is for the City Manager's Office, and I will turn it back over to Alex.
Thank you, Clay. And one thing that Clay didn't really quite address enough is how many roles he really has played in the city. He is what I call my plug-and-play Clay. Every time I have a vacancy, I plug Clay in, and Clay does tremendous work. And so he's been the City Clerk, he's been the Sustainability Manager, he's been the Director of Finance, he is now the Economic Development and Housing Manager, and his list will continue to, or his portfolio will continue to grow, I imagine. So let me wrap this up for us all today. You know, I think the opportunity to run and serve on a city council is a tremendous one, and I think I always marvel at the people who put themselves out there to do this kind of work, and I think it's tremendous. And it's great to know that the democratic process is alive and well. One of the things I think you would be inheriting if you joined the council and you started working with us on a regular basis is, we're a good organization. We're doing really good work. We are, you know, well-funded, the budget is balanced, I'd like to say we have 287 employees, but we don't. We're missing some employees. But basically, the council has acknowledged and recognized the need to deliver services to this community, and most of our service delivery is done through headcount. You know, future finances are strong. Nick showed that 10-year forecast based upon the assumptions we've plugged in before, and I do believe that 10-year forecast was invented by the Finance and Audit Committee, and it just shows that, just a very strong position. Now, again, we can't predict 10 years out, honestly, but with the best assumptions we have, I think things look really positive. So, you know, where there's good, there's also challenges, right? And some of the challenges we have, you know, coming up is despite the fact, we talked about all the money we have, we still have shortfalls. We still have a lot of capital needs we need to fund, and those capital needs just get bigger and bigger each year. Biggest challenge I have on a daily basis is attracting and retaining quality staff. It's the number-one problem I think the city organization has right now. And we are working feverishly to find strategies to make people not just want to come and join our staff, but stay on our staff. The biggest thing, problem we have, I think, is what the term we use is poaching. People leave us because somebody makes them a better offer.
Is that peculiar to Menlo Park?
No. What we are, the question was, is that peculiar to Menlo Park? And the answer is absolutely not. It's a very common phenomenon in Silicon Valley right now, not just on the public sector side, but even on the private sector side, and I will speak only to those that I've had a chance to meet with. You know, the brand-new hotel, the Hotel Nia, which is a huge, huge amenity in the Bayfront neighborhood, as well as the Park James Hotel, they're having a problem staffing. I mean, everyone's facing these challenges, and it's tough. Another interesting thing about Menlo Park, we have very high community expectations. And when we hold our goal-setting, for example, well, and it's a day-long event, we have a lot of members from the community showing up and expressing their interest in having some sort of new initiative to make the quality of life in Menlo Park better. And so, again, that's our purpose here, is to hopefully make the quality of Menlo Park better. You know, and the other, sort of the last challenge is we continue to be, it's difficult to manage some of the new developments coming away. The biggest one out there right now looming for us is the 60-acre Willow campus. It's a highly complex, highly interesting opportunity, both for Facebook and for the city, and the question's really going to be, at the end of the day, how can we manage that development process best, make sure the city benefits from Facebook's win? And so I think there's going to be really interesting conversations in the future about that. There's a question slide. So that's it. That's our presentation today. I want to let you know Menlo Park is in good hands, we just need more of them. And we're really happy to see some of you candidates coming forward and really putting yourself out there to help us manage Menlo Park into the future. I want to offer opportunities for you to ask questions, and to the extent we can answer them, we will certainly try. Or not. What we have up here, and just for your benefit, and the staff will stick around after this is over, we intentionally brought a bunch of the boards up here to really give you guys a chance to look more closely at them and have staff maybe answer some specific questions, whether it's about the transportation boards, the development boards, or the work plan boards. Again, this was really, hopefully, for your benefit, that you would feel comfortable asking those questions. If it's easy.
On the Parks and Rec, just to break down residents versus non-residents, what's your conclusion?
Derek, where'd you go?
Yeah, I'll try to answer that question. It really depends on...
Do you need to give the mic?
Yeah. The question was, what is the breakdown between, for the users of Parks and Rec facilities and services between residential, Menlo Park residents versus non-residents?
Great. So without having to give you very specific numbers with that, and I can be glad to get back to you on that, it really will depend on the service, particular service. We do tend to have a larger number of residents participating, at least from the community services side of facilities and our programs, and that's just based on our numbers. We can check residency and so forth. We do have a very high level of non-resident participation, though, in some of our programs, such as gymnastics, for instance, since we're the only, really the only, other than some of the Gold Star and some of the other gyms, we're really the only game in town, and so forth. Are all of our childcare programs highly, much more higher percentage, I'd say greater than 70, 75% or higher, that are going to be residents versus non-residents? The parks, since we don't really track participation, most all of our local parks, because of their proximity to residents, are highly attended by our residents, the exception being Bedwell Bayfront Park. It's much more of a regional park, and so it does tend to attract a number of folks that are from out of town. But specific numbers, I'd be glad to get back to you on those, and I can provide you my information after the meeting.
Okay. We'll be happy to send those through, Judy, and to all of you, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions from the audience, or from the candidates specifically, perhaps? Sure, please.
On the Chrysler, the... On the Chrysler, I think this was...
Pump station?
The, pardon me?
The Chrysler pump station?
Yes, the Chrysler pump station. Can you explain a little bit more as to the $6 to $10 million?
Sure. The Chrysler pump station came to our attention. It's about a 50-plus-year-old pumping facility that basically draws groundwater away from the displacement from the freeway dip where the train tracks cross the 101. Where are you, Derek? I mean, where are you, Justin? No, you stay seated, I'm going to handle this one. I'm going to get it right, I know I am. So several years ago, in fact, four years ago, or five years ago, it came to our attention the need to replace the pump station. Then it became this curious question around, whose pump was it? And it ended up being ours, and it was built, like I said, 50, 60 years ago. Its failure is not going to be a good situation. So we've been able to keep it running fairly well. About four years ago, we started the process of figuring out what's going to cost to replace it. Four years ago, anything you bought four years ago versus what you buy today, those numbers are very different. The real issue came down to, I think it was just the cost of the equipment, if memory serves me right. Where are you again? Am I close? Okay, yeah. And this is true for anything we're doing nowadays. We go out with bids, and we come back and find out that we are sometimes way off because our numbers can be very much dated, so. And again, our responsibility to the council is... And again, our responsibility to the council is to show our best effort on whatever those numbers might be, and they are based upon, you know, current engineering studies at the time we develop them. And that's why we do the bidding, is to find out what's it really going to cost. So that gap, that $4-plus-million-dollar gap, is something we are working on, trying to work with the property owners out in the Bell Haven, excuse me, out in the Bayfront neighborhood, the major property owners, to see if they'd be willing to help us fill that gap, since they will benefit from it. So it's pump, so when, this is what Nikki Nagaya taught me. So when the 101 went in, and there's a dip where the train trestle goes over the freeway, right? And that dip displaces groundwater, and so it pushes, so that the pump is basically working, where are you again? All the time? Yeah. So it's just a constantly pumping, so one of my original thoughts was, why isn't this not a Caltrans concern? But it's not a Caltrans concern, it's our concern. So it's just a pump, and if it's not pumping, it'll start to flood the neighborhood.
What train tracks cross?
The Dunbarton rail.
Oh, okay.
Right. Was that close, Justin? Good enough? Okay. George?
The final question about flooding. So if it does flood, where would this flood begin and how you would...
The flood plain mostly would be through the Commonwealth Project, the Gateway Project, and just through that end of, closer to Marsh Road. The residents in Bell Haven would not be affected. Parts of Facebook could be affected as well.
So it's businesses that benefit?
Correct.
Could be the beneficiary of the situation?
Correct, correct. Betsy.
Is any of that increased due to concerns about sequestration trying to complicate work?
Part of it is. So I know one of the, I'm going to keep trying this, Justin. So the origin, there was a plan that was looking at a 10-year flood, and we, the council gave us the option to go to a 100-year flood. Okay. And so part of the 100-year flood scenario is, it's a bit more expensive, but not dramatically more expensive. I think it added maybe a million to the project? Yeah.
So you're looking at the 100?
Yeah, we're looking at the 100-year flood. It's just, by the time you go that far, you might as well make sure you're really protecting, because 100 years from now, some city managers are going to be standing here saying, what were they thinking? Yes.
I'd like to know, what is the city, what is the arrangement that you have with the Child Cooperative Daycare Center that we have on par? I've been very curious about. I'd like to know, do we all have property, and if so, what do you think?
So I don't have that specific information, other than, it's, so I'm sorry, the question was about the Child Cooperative Daycare Center at Nealon Park, and it is a facility owned by the city. It's leased to an operator, and the city attorney is going to come and finish my sentence, because that's about the bulk of what I know.
So the building was actually built by the Co-op, it was not built by the city of Menlo Park, when there was a, and so we entered into a ground lease with the Co-op. It's the Menlo Atherton Co-op Nursery, something rather, I don't know the official name of it. But it goes back to, I think it was about the 1960s, it might have been the 1950s, 50s or 60s, they built the building. There was a fire then about, I want to say 10 years ago, maybe 15? Yeah. Whenever I guess, I'm off by, you know, double it, whatever my guess is. So it was probably 15 years ago. And again, they carried the insurance, they paid to rebuild it, the insurance actually wasn't adequate, they had to come up with additional funds to rebuild it, and I think the council at that time approved an extension. So they prepaid the entire lease, like $50 for a 50-year lease, if I remember correctly. And so they operate that facility.
Betsy.
I want to try this, partnerships like, there's some schools, three kinds of schools.
Yeah, so we actually, so, you mean, more general public-private partnerships, not necessarily related to kids or schools, just open-ended? Yeah. We have a long list of those. We have in the 50s to 100 that we could show you. I mean, we have this list, and we could, I'm happy to have it shared through Judy to you all, to see not just what the service is, but what the contracts are for. Simple things like what Derek said was, the Aquatic Center has been in a public-private partnership for 15 years-ish, although it's proving to be a bit challenging now. So we do this a lot, we have a lot, we contract a lot out to third-party providers. So again, happy to share that list with you when we can get it. Sure. Yeah, we bring it to every budget session, knowing full well, people are very interested to know, what do we provide in-house versus what do we send to a third party, so.
And I can also add it to the public website.
Yes. George?
As a Menlo Park, what's the best way you would have specific questions put in common here, so I could review or like?
So go through Judy. Judy's going to farm all questions for the city and respond out accordingly. And any question asked by a candidate, we will answer it to all the candidates. Every candidate will have the benefit of the answer, so. All right, any more questions? We will stick around happily if you want to talk privately. We do have the staff here to talk about the boards, if you guys have any questions about the boards. We want to make sure you guys have good information. Oh, Judy has one more closing statement, so thank you all very much.
I gave an opportunity for all of the candidates to come up, state their name and the district they're running for. We have another candidate who's joined us, George, so if you wanted to come up, introduce yourself and the...
Hi, I'm George, I'm running for city council in District 1. I'm a software engineer, I'm a creative coordinator, and talk to me if you want to.